Today is Wednesday, March 12th. It's 10:00 a.m. Called a meeting in Montague County Commission to order. Ask that you please stand for a moment of silent meditation and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Diane.
Hey. We don't have any exonerations today. We have fiduciary orders from March 12th, minutes of February 12th. We have vouchers, General County Fund, $213,572.43, Coal Severance Fund, $23,054.37, Camp Muffley, $34.99, Justin at Ridge Park, $499.11, 911, $2,009.1257, Morgantown Industrial Park, $29,953.82, Cessers Valuation Fund, $1,007.19, for a total of $271,746.29.
Move for approval. One second.
Second. Have a motion for approval in a second. All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Renetta.
Excuse me. Three items for reimbursement today. First is the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for the Mountaineer Area Rescue Group for $2,000. They've also exhausted all of their funds, so there's also a certificate of completion that needs to be signed by the President.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion for approval in a second. All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. We also have reimbursements for the day report center, February 2014, $16,257.06. And the DUI grant also for February 2014, $7,009.20. That's all the reimbursements I have today.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion for approval in a second. All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. We also have a grant application for the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program, also for the Mountaineer Area Rescue Group for some equipment. The President needs to, we need to authorize the President to sign. I also have a resolution. Whereas, $2,500 in Governor's Community Participation Grant Program funding set aside by the West Virginia Legislature for the County of Montague to undertake for the Mountaineer Area Rescue Group to purchase equipment. And whereas, the County of Montague has applied for funding through the West Virginia Development Office. And whereas, the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program requires that a local government unit enter into a contractual agreement with the West Virginia Development Office to receive and administer grant funds. Now therefore be it resolved by the Commission of the County of Montague, West Virginia, that the President is hereby authorized to execute said agreement and any other necessary documents on behalf of the Commission, and that he be empowered to sign the contract and any agreement necessary to obtain these funds.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
You want to approve the authorization?
And authorize the sign. So move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Correspondents. Diane.
Today, we have Carrie Costello with us. She's the new employee at the K-Nine Adoption Center, our new dog warden. Her first day of employment will be March 13th, which is tomorrow, full-time employee with benefits, and she must successfully complete a six-month probationary period.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion for approval in a second. All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Welcome.
And I just want to add, just so people know, Dana went out to Ridgedale Elementary School. They're doing a project to fund for the program that we offer you, the shelter. And I just want to publicly say, she did an amazing job. There's a big fundraiser going on to Kiss the Pig at Ridgedale, and all the funds will be go-
Are you going out there?
Yeah, actually, I'm going to go out there. And so, but, and please pass on to Dana. I publicly want to say that it was an act, the kids were ecstatic. She did a great program.
Good.
More correspondents?
This is, it's kind of unfinished business, but it is correspondence. We did receive a letter from Marsha Ashdown regarding the stormwater situation that we're dealing with out at the abuse subdivision. Basically, the last paragraph will read here. And, "I'm aware that the county commissioners out of concern for the residents within the affected subdivisions have been interested in studying this matter to determine what, if anything, the County Board of Health is obligated or authorized to do. I'm aware that the Board of Health has acted as a liaison with other agencies, including MUB and DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers, in an effort to assist in a resolution to the sewage and stormwater problems. That is a very appropriate activity for the Board of Health. If I am correct in thinking that MUB is awaiting word from the Montague County Commission regarding public funds that the Commission may be willing to contribute to fixing the stormwater problem by replacing the existing culvert system with a larger culvert system, is my belief that MUB should be advised to proceed with their project and not wait on the county commission's participation unless the commissioners are interested in contributing a specified amount of public funds for such assistance. Such a contribution is not mandated and could set an unintended precedent."
Yeah. She also goes on and says that she'd write further on this, I believe.
At greater length when I return the office on the 17th.
I would expect that. I think we've emphasized repeatedly that we are under no legal obligation to help with these systems, but we do so, and we have done so in the past, both with water and other specific problems. It's when the amount gets to the level that we're not just assisting them in resolving their problem, but actually resolving their entire problem with them without their contributing to the resolution. I think that's what's created the problem, but I have no problem with continuing to meet with the MUB and Timbal. I don't think she said that we're prohibited from assisting. It just says that we got to be careful of the precedent, so.
Right.
And I think we're cognizant of that. I think we've even mentioned that in the past, that if we put $625,000 for, what was it, 140 homes or 130 homes or something like that, and we count 13,000 parcels, 13,000, 14,000 parcels in the county, we have to start dividing up that. That's a lot of $600,000.
Yes.
Spread around, so. That's just my comment on it.
Any comment?
No.
I just, I agree with your comments. I think we need to move cautiously. I don't think we need to abandon that project. I think we can assist where appropriate, given the guidance provided by the prosecutor attorney. But I think we do need to proceed with caution.
I will also report that this morning between 9:00 and 10:00, there was a conference call with the Army Corps of Engineers. And I asked Mike Paul to sit in on that conversation to see what he could learn from it.
Now, I found it interesting that, I think, in the letter, I think they alluded that actually was responsibility of the Department of Environmental Protection on the stormwater call. So, I mean, we need to keep in mind that they need to be an active player in this whole issue, since it's their responsibility in getting that situation corrected.
With MUB?
Yes.
Because MUB's only-
DEP.
Oh, D, okay.
DEP.
I'm sorry.
I recall that letter also saying that that stormwater issue, the stream is Corps of Engineers, but the stormwater issue is DEP, Department of Environmental Protection. So we really haven't involved them.
No.
And we may, if we have a follow-up meeting, we may want a representative from DEP to be here.
So, nothing further on that?
Nothing else? That's it?
Correspondents, yes.
Unfinished business?
I have one item. If pass on, and that way you can have it in the meeting. If you remember about six or eight weeks ago, you had asked me to be on a committee with Kerry Blaney, Gary White, and I apologize to the other officer's name, and with the lawyers, to discuss key card access and also access to the courthouse after hours. I'm going to ask that this be put on the work session, but since the work session isn't covered, I just want to hit the highlights, and I did send you all a copy. I'm really pleased. I believe there's a great compromise, which basically, we're continuing to Monday through Friday, currently from 6:00 a.m., opening till 11 o'clock p.m. But one of the, two of the major changes that we would make is that each attorney would sign a release of liability, hold harmless agreement. The other major, well, the other two major changes, they would only be entering and exiting one entrance and exit, in one entering area. And the third thing is that if they were there before, anyone who would be in the record room, as we have on weekends prior to 9:00 a.m. or after 5:00 p.m., shall make a courtesy, notify court security, and we have a phone number or text, so that way we know what's going on. And I can tell you, it's already been working. It's going very well. And I know, you know, I'd like to discuss it at the work session, but I did want to publicly state that, as we were just talking, President Bartolo did add one, which we'll also discuss, which would be number seven, which would be determination to access to the courthouse after hours has to be approved by the county commission, which is exactly what we want to have, and wouldn't affect anyway in the agreement. And the other change is, it has my name on it only because I was there, but I would like to make the change that it would go to whoever the President has assigned, and if we could discuss that at the work session today.
Let me just make one comment about one more addition.
Sure, go ahead.
I think it's been a past practice, and I think we need to continue with that. And I don't recall reading it in this proposal, that all applications for after-hours use have to be approved by the county commission.
Oh, okay.
Go through the county clerk, and then she would bring up the application to us.
Sure. Okay. My, mine's take a lot of that. Put a little note right here that said that paragraph two should say the county clerk with the county commission's approval.
With, okay. And that's good, and that's why I wanted to give this to you, and that way, if we can come through the work session, then the next week, we could adopt it and move forward on it. Okay. But I do want to thank everyone involved.
Maybe you said this, Tom.
Sure.
But just to make clear, this is an agreement that was drafted by the attorneys on your committee, right?
Yeah, well, yes.
With your-
With our participation, yeah. The attorneys, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they have the right legalese. I asked them to put in legalese for it.
Well, I wasn't pointing that out. I just wanted the people to know that this wasn't an agreement that you adopted on your own-
No, this was, we had a-
Cooperative agreement.
Exactly.
It's just a draft.
And I did want to publicly know, and I'm real pleased. I think it was a great compromise, and so move forward. So, again, we'll talk about that at the work session. Thank you.
That's good. Okay. Anything else? Unfinished business?
Yes. Recently, we've been talking about the taxable fringe benefits, and I've drafted, for your consideration, two memorandums that will address the housing issues for the park superintendents, and also the take-home vehicles for the maintenance, dog wardens, homeland security, motor pool. And basically, the one for the drivers is in view of the recent discussions regarding taxable fringe benefits. The Montague County Commission has adopted the following policy statement. All employees under the jurisdiction of the Montague County Commission who have been assigned a vehicle to be taken home as a requirement of their designated position are considered to be on-call 24/7 unless on annual leave or sick leave. This determination will therefore exempt those employees from claiming the vehicle as a taxable fringe benefit. This policy shall apply to the above-named employees and any other under the direct supervision of the Montague County Commission with a similar circumstance. All other taxable fringe benefits, when applicable, clothing, meals, travel, et cetera, must be claimed for taxing purposes. And similar to that will go to the superintendents of the parks, that all park superintendents under the jurisdiction of the Montague County Commission who have been assigned a residence at the park where they are currently employed as a requirement of their designated position are considered to be on-call 24/7 unless on annual leave or sick leave. This determination will therefore exempt those employees from claiming the residence as a taxable fringe benefit.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion for approval in a second. All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Diane. Very welcome.
Yes. Very well put.
Anything else?
No.
New business? I think we have a report coming here from Commissioner Callen.
Yes. I spent two days in Charleston, and I would start out by saying that I met with the Deputy Chief of Staff for the Governor, Jason Pizzatella, for about an hour on Monday. And I also met with the Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Highways in the Secretary Maddox Department of Transportation. And I'm happy to report that the Emergency Road Fund that Montague County has proposed has been adopted and is a-go.
Wow.
The, it has received the support and endorsement of both the Governor and Secretary Maddox.
Wow.
And they have also promised to match our contribution, or any other contribution we elicit, dollar for dollar. This, they are, I met with Harry Burkstrom and his full staff, include Greg Phillips, our local district manager, and others from the Department of Highways to work out specific We should have a draft agreement by the next meeting. We could then go over. One of the couple issues that I'm sure that everyone will be asking about, that I clarified, number one was that the, this, this program will in no way take away from their normal program. And the normal amount of money that they have allotted or planned for Montague County or for any county, it will not take any money from any other county. The matching funds will be coming from an administrative account, over and above anything else. So that's a plus. The priorities, they give me a breakdown of priorities. This will be ongoing, and I'll need the Commission's approval to proceed. This project will take ongoing participation with us, and specifically, if you want me to do it, you'd have to approve me to continue to work with that. The funding mechanism, I'll be working directly with the Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner Burkstrom. The agreement, I'll be working with another member of his staff in Charleston, and the, sort of, what would you call, the project oversight.
Yeah.
I'll be working with that. Also, the priorities and all, I'd be working directly with Greg Phillips, our district manager. The, they will establish a regional level of priorities. We, however, will establish the additional priorities. We will decide where the money that we contribute and the matching funds will go, and how it will be spent. The, let's see, what else we got? Okay. Well, one other thing, I'm glad to see, see the mayor, the mayor here, one of our mayors here. One of the other things that came out of that meeting, and we talked about, was that if we work with the municipalities, if we join in with the municipalities and surrounding counties, they will also match any funds that they contribute to our county emergency fund. So, so what they explained to me, and I started to draft an email, but I ran out of time, sometimes I just ran out of time, to all the legislators in the surrounding counties on this, so I'm going to need approval on this, to, to proceed with this. That the biggest, the biggest expenditure, I got a real education on how to build roads, and what the problems are, and what you run into, and I got a real praise the DOH. I spent two or three hours with them yesterday, and got quite an education. When it comes to the repairing roads, and I'm sure the mayor can tell you this, we have his own experiences, that the biggest chunk of cost is moving the equipment. Because you got to pay to move the equipment from point A to point B, and here and there, and that if it's broken down into segments instead of a combined cooperative thing, that some municipalities and organizations have found themselves only getting $28 of road improvement to $100 cost to the taxpayer. Those are some of the figures they gave me, not necessarily our locals, but from the general experience. So by combining, and what we're looking at is economic core to economic core. I'm starting to talk like I know what DOH is talking about. But basically, if we can reach an agreement, for example, we're talking about Wetzel County, Preston County, Taylor County, and Marion County. If we could reach an agreement that we all contribute to this fund, we get matching funds from the state, then they could contract in a single contract, which saves money, and single movement of equipment, which saves money. Route 7, for example, all the way from Morgantown to Kingwood, or all the way from Morgantown to New Martinsville, or the Kingwood Pike, or 19 or 119. This would save substantial wasted funds if we can do that. Likewise, if we could do, and let me add this, in each, and they could, they could figure out per foot, you know, how much, how much would go to, say, for Preston County would have to contribute, how much we'd have to contribute. They could do all that for us. Likewise, if municipalities are looking at doing some road improvements or paving, they can combine their contracts with the DOH contracts, so while the state roads are being improved, they could work in the municipality's other paving program, so that it would be one combined contract, and thereby, I was told that there could be a substantial savings, because if they could get any larger contracts, they have been known to discount up to as much as 30% from these contracts. So, so all of this is very exciting. I would reemphasize that, that they're on board. They love your idea, Bill. It's great. They, they're really, they're really looking at this, and I was told this both in the Governor's Office and in, and in the Department of Highways, that they are looking at this as a possible pilot program, that we can work out the bugs, and then they can take it to other counties throughout the, throughout the state. And it could be a major, major headway in improving the roads in our state. You know, DOH gets beat up a lot, and I think a lot of, a lot of us kind of forget that you can, you can charge someone to complete a task, but if you don't give them the funds and the equipment and the manpower to do it, you don't pay for that, you can beat up them all day long, doesn't mean they're going to do any better.
Right.
So, I'm very happy with the DOH. They have, they are hopeful, and our goal is to complete this agreement and be one of the first road maintenance projects to kick off as soon as asphalt. We got to wait on the asphalt company, because we don't want to throw money away on these cold patches, you know? I mean, you got to, because there's a danger, there's a danger, you got to. I'm not saying that, but what I, but what I'm saying is, what our goal is for this particular emergency fund, is to get permanent fixes to the road, just right out, off the bat, right, immediately, right away. If I have the Commission's authorization, I will continue to work on this, work out the details on how we set and establish priorities. We hope to get, in addition to working with counties and municipalities, we also could get contributions from public and private entities, such as, such as the WVU, Vermont State, private entities, if we've got-
School system.
Large organizations that want to contribute, there's, we're looking at matching dollars of that. The only caveat that got a little concerned at, not the Governor's Office, when I was talking about different places I would, I would go get money, which I'm not going to make public right now until I try to knock on their doors.
[inaudible]
They, right. One of the things the Governor's Office got was that old, said, now, now, we might have to put a cap on this now, because if you come back here wanting $2 million matching funds, we might have a problem. But I says, okay, all right, I'll keep you posted on the money. So, it was a very, very good, good reception, and I would, I would add that we, as a commission, and I pointed out that it was Commissioner Bartolo's idea that he's been building on, but they praised us for our leadership and foresight in trying to deal with a problem that exists throughout the state that affects everyone. It is not Charleston's problem that we don't, we have road problems. It's not the, the DOH problem that we have. The real problem, yeah, you can complain all day, the real problem is for the citizens. It's the citizens' problem. And we got praised for our leadership in trying to move forward on resolving this problem, and they're encouraged to work with us. And the last thing, I think Kerry, I think it was Kerry that said to me as we got out there, so you go back, you all come up with any other ideas, call me right away, I'll be right on it with you.
So, we'll also move-
That's my report.
Yeah, I'll also move that we continue to have Eldon Callen be our representative to work out the kinks in this compromise.
Okay. Well, if you would-
Sure.
Just expand that to any, any aspect involving this project.
Right.
That I think you've represented us very capably, not only in this issue, but previous issue, on the TIF projects, as well as, as the property tax increases.
Thank you.
And I think it's working very well. We certainly don't want to fix it. So.
So, I'll add that as amendment to completely, on all issues that are related to this dealings with the DOH, the project.
I'll second it, and I'll make some comments afterwards, if it's okay. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I just wanted to comment in terms of, and I think Commissioner Callen said it in terms of contributors, with expanding the area of consideration, you know, the WVU, working in cooperation with the municipalities. I saw crews from Westover out, Westover already has, mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, has an agreement with the state to do some work on, on the state roads over there.
You know, my theory's always been play dumb and look for forgiveness.
And you're good at that, right?
Anyway, it brings home the point that-
Not just big breakups.
The motivating force behind this thing, and I think the state has gotten on board with us, is the needs of the people. That's what motivated this project, is that we can have some long-term goals in terms of working with other counties, but, but we're talking about immediacy here. We're talking about safety here. We're talking about what the people need. here. We're talking about what the people need here, and I think that's the driving force behind this concept, and it should be. Hopefully, it'll contaminate other issues and be the driving force of other areas, that the people's needs are supreme and should take precedent over any other needs. The one thing that I do want to clarify, and I think you got clarification on this in Charleston, is that originally, we talked about diversion of funds from education and diversion of funds from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have clarification on those two issues, and we cannot do that without legislative approval, because they were created by legislative approval. So we can't divert funds that the legislature said are going here. So that's, maybe it works in progress, or it may not even be a successful approach, but it shouldn't stop this project. However, we would say to the Board of Education and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, "Don't let that stop you from making a voluntary contribution to the county's road fund." We would welcome that, and we welcome you participating with us in a spirit of cooperation. There are roads that run to schools, and there are visitors that come to Morgantown and the surrounding area and drive over these roads. So I think you talked about, people will look at it and say, "Well, it's the state." Well, who is the state of West Virginia? The state of West Virginia is the people that live in the cities and the rural areas and the counties throughout this state. If it wasn't for them, there would be no state of West Virginia. So we took one step beyond. Instead of pointing fingers at who should do something about this, decided that we want to do it. We need to get it done. The people need it. It's a safety issue, and if there's a way to do it, we need to do that. I would also like to put it on the agenda for our intergovernmental meeting, which we're going to have in April.
Right.
And the last comment I have, Eldon, is that I think we owe you a debt of appreciation for your efforts and working as a member of this commission in the spirit of cooperation. And I think all three commissioners can take pride in the cooperation that exists on this commission. I know when I came on this commission, and I guess I'm a senior member here, is that that spirit was not here. And what we have now, we should make every attempt to maintain. And I think it's through efforts like yours, Eldon, and Tom's, and I think that's all participating together and finding a common direction that keeps our spirit of cooperation alive. Thank you.
If I had two quick comments, and two major items that I think the community can get out of this. When we say the county fixing the roads, I want it real clear, and I think all three of us are making it very clear, the county means not only outside the city, but also the municipalities. And that's what you want to get across, because a lot of people think it's us and them. No, it's all of us together. So I want that real clear, and I appreciate the Westover mayor being here, so he can hear that, and I think he does know that, but I want to get that clear to the citizens, that it's everyone in the county. And the other thing is, when you talk about cooperation, I think what we have done since the second day of the legislative session, when we went down there for Mon County Day, is that I think we've lit a fire in Charleston, realizing for the first time that Mon County is working together, and as much as it's great, I think in a way it kind of scares them, because we're finally getting it together and moving forward, and now they realize we have these great ideas, and now they're actually going to work with us and listen to us. And I think that is what the big statement that's coming out of this, is that Mon County is getting represented and is being heard in Charleston, and this is just the tip of the iceberg of what we can do.
One question I'd like to ask is, do we need to create a special fund, a separate checking account for this road fund?
Just a line item.
Yes, we'll need to establish a separate fund, and how that fund will be distributed, matched, and all. A couple of things that I could add, but yeah, we would need to have an entirely separate fund on this. Kelly, you heard that, right?
Yeah.
We need an entirely separate fund on that. That doesn't create a problem, does it?
Well, no, you wouldn't necessarily have to create another bank account. It could be another fund within your general county.
Okay.
If you were, you know.
Okay, but we got to have-
The money would be reported separately.
Okay. What I'm asking is, I guess what I'm asking is a detail here, because it sort of answered the question real quick, and I shouldn't have, I should have looked for someone that knows what they're talking about first. What I'm talking about is, if we combine with municipalities, we combine with one or two other counties, and then we have state matching funds, we wouldn't be able to just put all those funds in the general funds, would we?
Yes, you actually can, because even though it is in the same checking account, it is assigned another fund number.
Okay.
But wouldn't we have to ensure that when we start receiving contributors directly to that fund, that those funds are not touched for any other reason?
Yeah. And you receive that, the financial report that you receive-
It'd just be that on-
-on a monthly basis, if you'll notice, there's a line item for general county, general school, the dog tax and all that. All that money's actually in one checking account, but they are reported as separate funds.
Would we also have retrieval capabilities, for example, let's say Westover and the county decide, "Okay, we're going to do a cooperative effort on the road, and down the road, we do something with Grandview and Star City, and we do something with the city of Morgantown." Will we be able to extract so that we can reflect costs to those municipalities who participate in it?
Because their contributions will just go to the state road system within their city.
I understand that. So this is probably something that we need to sit down and maybe not make a decision right now.
Right, okay.
Until we're sure exactly how it's all going to-
Okay, well, I'm still working on that.
-to be handled, we can work that out.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to do, and I want to make a request to the media, if I may, is that we would like to notify and get out the word to individual contractors, because one thing that we don't want to do with the pothole situation is drag it out. So the only way we can expedite that is with individual contractors, more than one, if we're looking at the whole county, which we are. So what I'd like to do is, and we can do other formal ways of requesting this, but is request any contractor that would be interested in participating in this cooperative effort of patching the roads and temporary repairs and maintenance, that they contact the county commission, Diane, or send a letter. We also would welcome any ideas from them in terms of how we would assess costs, because it's going to be kind of difficult if there's a road that has some severe potholes on it and there's only three or four on there. How are we going to estimate or guesstimate what the cost of that repair is going to be? We need to be able to have a breakdown of something, what has cost us, a cost ratio. So we would welcome ideas from private contractors. The other thing is, would sort of like to start getting the word out, we can do more of this formally and other ways, is open up our arms to contributors. This road fund is a public road fund. This road fund is for the betterment of Mon Gay County and all the municipalities contained therein. This road fund is for the benefit of all the people that live and drive on the roads of Mon Gay County and in our municipalities. We need to get that message out loud and clear, and as soon as we get our bank account established, we will welcome any contributions to it. Mayor, did you have a comment? I will deviate a little bit from procedures here, but-
I was thinking along the lines of, you know, in some of these areas, like in the city of Western, we're capable of patching the holes ourselves.
Okay.
So if that would be, if our labor would be a contribution to that, to this, you know what I'm saying?
I think we could work that out. It's a good idea.
Sure.
Because that way, we don't have to wait on anybody. We don't have to wait on contractors.
That's right.
And we're just buying the material.
If you start including contractors, you're going to have to do some sort of bidding process.
Well, yeah, but I want to make this clear, okay? The contract that would be let will be let by all of us. That's how we make the money, you know, any outside contract. I could foresee where your workmanry could be considered part of the contribution for possible matching funds. But I think what we're trying to, in order to save that money, is we've got to come up with priority lists, and we've got to sort of combine together with your project, because the funds that are in this account can only be used on state-
Right.
On state-
Can't be on Pennsylvania Avenue.
Right, right, the state road system. It has to be in the state road system. But you can realize a savings by doing, by buying the asphalt same time or whatever to this contracting mechanism. So I will certainly keep that in the forefront of using municipality labor as a contribution. I wanted to add a couple other things, if I may. I already mentioned about the money being used on the state road system. In the discussion, you reminded me, is that there are some other entities in assistance in setting the priorities, which will also be a reason why they should be looking at their budgets, too, is the school board transportation director. They suggested we involve them as to buses and what major routes cause a problem or whatever. Transit authority, what routes they have, utilities, MUB, gas, any buried electric lines or anything, anything that would be used in the roads, they need to establish, we were laughing about, the thing that they keep having, even though they'll give two or three years' notice, is they will redo a road, and three months later, one of the utilities will come up and rip it up, and start putting, "Oh, we're going to put a new water line in." And even though the DOH notifies all utilities and entities that they're going to do this project, then is there anything you need to do? Invariably, they don't pay attention to it. They just go by their own. So this is a great effort in trying to, a great effort in trying to bring all that together. So we should probably focus on utilities. I also wanted to make a comment, because I did discuss, I did discuss the prior letter in the issue, and it was sort of a separate discussion. One of the things, in Mon Gay County, those are two entities that have realized a major increase or influx of money, of funds available to them, i.e. the school board and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is, I have learned, and I'd heard before, but I'd learned even more so, that this is really not a novel idea. Actually, North Carolina did this a few years back.
Call me, cats.
And what they did, both at the state and local level, something similar to this, both at state and local level, they established a baseline for all revenue and expenditure groups. If you've got revenues coming in, you've got expenditures, and that baseline was both the local and the state level. And if it increased by more than the cost of living or 5% in a given year, that increase went into a road fund automatically. The theory behind this, and it's actually a great theory, of course, they've got to still work with it down there, or kick it around, but the theory behind this is that someone that gets extra money, any amount of extra money, will find a reason to spend it. They'll spend it on something. "Oh, I got an extra $2 billion. Ah, let's go out and buy this, or let's have this." And isn't it really an essential benefit that the citizens need? North Carolina did that for a few years. I understand Greg Phillips was talking about it as well with me. They did that, and they were able to build a road fund to solve a lot of their transportation problems. So it's, in Mon Gay County, Commissioner Bartolo pointed out two entities that he knows received a major influx of funds. But it could apply to anyone. It can apply to any entity or taxing revenue unit. That's the way North Carolina did it. And I did get the response of, "Well, if North Carolina could make it work, we ought to be smart enough to make it work, too."
Make it work better.
That's right. So I would just say that that part would require legislation. It would require some time, but is certainly still on the discussion table. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Any other report from county commissioners?
Oh, okay. I have two quick reports. First of all, good news. We met the Council for Homeless. You had asked me to attend, and I'll tell you, I think we've set a precedent, because one of the things that came out was they liked the idea of everyone working together, and what they said was, what we were having right now in dealing with that issue is agencies have clients, but we are now interpreting that all the agencies need to work together and look as it's a community that has the clients, and we're going to pool our resources together. And one of the things that came out of it was, as you know, we had the, call it the cold shelter that we had to open up, and the concern that was brought up by the group was that they needed somebody, they didn't have the money to pay for someone who would kind of oversee and watch it. And as one of the three county commissioners, I said I would bring back to us the possibility of seeing what we could do to look to have a separate little fund, would be no more than like about a $500, that if we have emergency situations, to help fund a person to keep that cold shelter open. So that's something that we'll talk about at budget time, but it was something that I believe all the groups were saying, you know, "We never worked together, and we're fighting each other for the limited dollars." So what we're looking at streamlining, and they did clearly say they were taking the objective from what county commission was doing with the parks. So I think we're having a great assessment for the community. The other thing is, and I'm going to say this, you know me, the legislature killed the salary bill for the county commissioners. Now, I did see that it is requested by Kessler, one of three bills to possibly put on the extended session, but I have to put in writing why several people killed it. The bottom line is, Delegate Lane said, "This bill does nothing to help those people in our communities who pay the salaries." Delegate Kaputa came back with, "If this body adopts that mentality, no elected officials would have ever gotten a pay raise since 1863. It's been years since these folks had a pay raise responding to the new, what the job would pay. Let me tell you what you would end up with. The retired, the retained, and the rich, they would be the only people that could afford to hold public office." And I do hope, and I am going to go on the record, say that I do hope it's put back on the agenda and it's looked at. It's not, has any funding to do with the state. It's on whether the county can afford it, then the auditor will verify that they can afford it, then the county can make that decision on it. And the reason why I say that is, what happened to me, and it shouldn't happen to anyone else, going from a job that was paying $65,000 a year down to a job that paid $37,000. In one sense, the people saying they don't want full-time politicians. This is a part-time job, and look what now happens. The only way a person would have to give up their higher-paying job to do community service at a lower-paying salary. And very few people can do that. I want to see that anyone would have the right to run for an office and represent us. And I'm very concerned, and I believe this is a way to equalize it. So I hope this, we would, I hope- So I hope this, we would, I hope my legislators here would support this if it goes out there. I think it's something that's key, it's needed, and everyone should be allowed to run and be able to afford to represent the community. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No, I've talked enough.
Well, we could talk a lot about pay raises, but I'm not going to. My priority has been and always will be services to the public. And if we need that money to provide services, then pay raises just have to wait for at least county commissioners for a part-time job. The report from elected officials. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to add, Dave Johnson, City of Westover. I personally have passed up a couple of jobs in the last six years that could have paid two, three times what I made. Not looking for a pat on the back, but, you know, I'm like you guys, if somebody doesn't do it, you know, somebody's got to do these jobs. And it's, the city of Westover did raise the position from $25,000 to $40,000. I spent four years at $25,000, but I knew what I was getting into when I got in. I have a vested interest in the city, and then I want to see what happens. And I sat back long enough to watch people not do things. And that's what happens, you know? We've had people that are retired, that run for mayor, or just didn't, you know, they were just there. They didn't do anything. They weren't proactive like you guys have been. And my kudos to you guys on this project with the DOH, you guys are doing a great job with that. It's a great idea, you know, I think, I don't think, I know it works. You know, if Charleston's surprised by Mon County, the leadership in Mon County, then they obviously haven't been paying a lot of attention to what goes on around here. And I think you guys have done a great job. And anything the city of Westover can do, and you might have to yell at me every now and then, because, you know, I'm a forgiveness type of guy, but we get the job done. We were concerned with, you know, and you made a good point when you were, when they made a good point, I guess, when they told you about the school bus drivers and people that are on these roads all the time. They're the ones that know where the places are, and they're the ones that deal with it. I do it on a local level, you know? My garbage truck drivers always tell me where places are because they have to do this and do that and get around stuff.
That's something we need to add.
And you get good information from the people that are out there doing that. Because, you know, I can't be on all the roads all the time. I'm on a lot of, but, you know, and I just think that this project's going to work. And I also think that the legislators need to take a hard look, especially in Mon County, because, I'll give you an example, we have two hotels in Westover, soon to have two more. The gateway's building two more. So that's more money that's going to go to the convention and visitor bureau. The property taxes that went up severely in Mon County, so that's more money that's going to go to the Board of Education. There needs to be a cap on some of these things. Like North Carolina, you know, you get to a certain, what, how much money does the Board of Education need for right now? You know, I mean, it's just, you know, the economic development in Mon County is far from over, far from, the western side of the interstate, that could be something that people will talk about 100 years from now. It really can be. I mean, it's there. So there's ways of getting this done, and there's ways of getting, you know, the legislators have to look at that, listen to what people on a local level have to say. They really want to put it there. If they don't want to listen, we'll put somebody else in there.
You know, I'd just like to make a comment regarding to your comments, Mayor, because I think you hit on a very important point, and that is that I think our legislators need to take on new thinking. They need to get out of the box.
Absolutely.
Because Monongate County is an exception to the rule, and the old style of government of all 55 counties being the same doesn't apply anymore. And it's certainly not going to apply in the future. I mean, there are counties that are developing, there are counties that are more progressive, and not that we want to leave other counties behind, but we will have a greater ability to help other counties if they let us achieve our potential. And I think that's the message, and I think you said it very well, we need to get across to the legislature, is that take the reins off of us. Let us go, let us move, let Monongate County progress to the degree it can. And don't hold us back because some other county doesn't have the ability or isn't fortunate enough to experience the development that we are here in Monongate County. But I think that's a distant, I had to comment because I think it's a critical point.
You guys have, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mayor. Report from department supervisors.
You missed the sheriff.
Oh, well.
He's in front of me.
Oh, yeah, I forgot, Sheriff, you're elected, you're not appointed.
He's in green, blended in with the chair.
That's right, green.
Okay, with apologies, Sheriff, it's your turn.
No, it's okay, don't apologize. I can be, I can mix into the crowd. Just one comment, really. And I have to make this comment as the sheriff of this county, and not as the president of the West Virginia Association of Counties. I agree wholeheartedly with what Commissioner Boone said about compensation bill. I think it should go back on the extended session. And, you know, a lot of people look at, and Delegate Lane made the comment, well, people knew what they were being paid when they took the office, and yes, I did, as well as other elected officials. But I think at some point, you have to also realize that you don't think that you're going to serve your whole career in an elected position, never expecting an increase in your salary, when your employees that you supervise get a raise every year or every other year. And particularly in my situation, I have employees that make more money than I, but I'm the one with the ultimate responsibility of answering the decisions that I make in the direction that our department goes, and that includes the tax office as well. So, you know, do I think elected officials deserve an increase in salary? Absolutely. I think eight years is a long time to go when you have employees that you supervise that get a raise every year and are making more money than in my case are now. I know that, you know, the legislature, they like to change bills, and they like to do amendments, and a lot of times, they do that, and we all know this, we're fairly intelligent people, I like to think, but when they start doing those things, we know they're doing it usually for one reason, they're trying to kill the bill. I think it was terrible that the House made the amendments that they made and then delayed sending their amendments to the Senate to have them vote on and confirm in this situation. And that, I believe, according to all the reports I've heard, was done on purpose. And when you approve something or vote on your amendments and have that done at 11:30 in the morning, and then don't send it to the Senate to be confirmed until that evening, about an hour or so before the session's over, I think everybody can see what happened. So I think, yes, it should go back on the extended agenda for the legislature, and I certainly hope that one of the things they'll consider is, this doesn't have anything to do with the state budget, it doesn't take a penny away from the state budget. And I wholeheartedly believe that teachers and service personnel in the school systems absolutely deserved a raise, and they got their raise. That does affect the state budget. As Commissioner Callen said before, judges and magistrates got two raises within three years.
And they're trying to get a third right now.
And I realize that came from Springfield, but this doesn't come from the state budget. We're not adding any deficit to the state budget if they approve this compensation for elected officials. So I support it as a sheriff, and I hope it goes through this time.
If I may, I'd like to add a couple things. One of the things is, the sheriff's deputies, another group I just wrote down, I'm sitting here taking notes of my group, now they gave me the responsibility to make sure this works.
That's all you're going to be doing.
But the sheriff, your department will be critical in helping to identify priorities and rules and everything.
All first responders.
Yeah, all first responders, thank you. I see it coming to my list. The other thing is, I agree with you, because I've commented so much with the County Commissioners Association and Association of Counties about the salary bill, especially the commissioners, because we know what the commissioner's position was. And a lot of it goes with what Commissioner Bartolo said earlier, is the fact that the counties are so diverse, you know? We have, what, 35 counties with less than 20,000 population? We only have three counties with more than 100,000 population. The rest of them are in the, other than Cabell County, which is like 94, 95,000 population, all the rest of them are in the 70, 50 to 75,000, 75,000 or less population. So invariably, we have, there's numbers diverse like that, and not so much as a criticism as a recognition, that's why I'm so active and I go and I speak my mind to the groups, is that the organization tends to lean towards the smaller counties. Because that's the majority of the members, that's the majority of people that participate. And those are the people that are having budget problems and things. Well, I thought that, I thought there were some parts of this bill that were acceptable and properly dealt with this. But I felt, and I'd said at the time, and said to our legislators down there, that I felt the bill, as it came out of the Senate, was meant to kill it as well. There were things in there, from 10 to five classification, served zero purpose. Zero, it means nothing. All it did was create a worse situation for those smaller counties by throwing populations of 30,000 to 50,000 in with populations of 8,000. Well, I'm not stupid. I can look at that and see, whoever came up with that idea wanted to kill this bill from day one. They knew it. I'm convinced of that. And there were other things. Always in the past, everyone that held a position, it was the position that got the salary. Well, the Senate says, no. Basically, each one of the commissioners would be making a different salary. No commissioner would ever make the same salary. There would always be two behind one, the way they set it up, the whole, plus, the way they committed future funds, that if you adopted this, you had to also adopt your Future funds, where the Constitution prohibits us voting to commit funds of a future commission. That was all done in the Senate. I believe the delay in, I can't help but agree with you with that, that this whole thing from day one had parties in it that wrote the whole thing, and I told Vivian and the county commissioners, when I first read the thing when it come out, I said, this is one of the stupidest bills I've ever seen, and either these people don't know what in the world they're doing, or they designed this to kill it. Well, the whole room responded, they designed it to kill it. So I agree with you there. Thank you.
Okay. Chuck, you're representing an elected official.
No comments.
Assistant's office, no comment.
This will work all over again.
No news is good news, right?
Can we just also make recognition, want to congratulate or thank, I see Bobby Doyle's back, he was operated on, and he's walking around, and I want to welcome you back, and it's time, you know, you had enough vacation, let's put you to work. But welcome back.
Did you have lobotomy?
Lobotomy.
Well, with that, Bobby, we'll give you the first coat. You can retaliate if you'd like, but. Any comments, anything? Diane? Kelly? Perry? Janet?
Can we go down and check somewhere?
Going to McCordell Square, we can bring them.
Any member of the public have a comment? Being no further comments, so have a motion.
Move for adjourned.
Second.
Have a motion adjourned in a second, all in favor signify saying aye. Motion carried.